Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of May 7, 2025. At this time, I want to ask everyone to rise so we can pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. Thank you. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media and that our next scheduled Board of Appeals meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 21 of this year at 6 o'clock PM. Moving along to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first matter we have is variance case ZAV 25-2. The petitioner applicant is Neil LaFevere and the owner is David Elizabeth Dunabedian. The subject property is located at 37 Stoneledge Road, also known as MAP 123 lot 243. The matter was legally advertised on April 3 and April 10 of 2025.
Make a motion that we waive the reading of the abudders list.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a variance proposing a four-foot bump out addition to the front of a building for a covered porch and mudroom area, reducing front setback from 20.9 to 14.9 feet. The property is located in the general residence and the general residence district requires a 20-foot setback to a street line. They're seeking relief on the Article 375-10.4D 1A development standard setbacks. Let's see what we've got for comments from town boards. Actually, before we go there, let me read the building inspector's letter. It's a letter dated March 24th and it's addressed to Neil LaFevere and it's in regards to 37 Stoneledge Road. And it says, "I have reviewed your application and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to noncompliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant proposing addition of a four-foot bump out on front of building for covered porch and mudroom area, reducing front setback from 20.9 to 14.9." General Residence requires 20 feet setback to street line. A variance is required to reduce your front setbacks from 20.9 to 14.9 and it requires relief under 375-10.4D, which is a 20-foot setback requirement. And the letter goes on to say that the property is located in the general residence district. All right. And we also have a comment. We have comments from the DPW. I'm not going to read them all into the record, gentlemen. It's the standard comment that they put forth in all of the cases. We okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So, at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their representative to come forth and state your case. If you could please just identify your name and address.
My name is Neil LaFevere. I am the owner of Empire Design Build. My address is 81 South Main Street in Berkeley, Mass. I am here in regards to the project for David Elizabeth Dunabedian. You guys had just read everything, so you guys know what it's about right now. So, in meeting with the inspector there, one of the things that you'll notice on the plot plan that was done is that 20-foot setback line goes to the-
Just hold one second. Let me check and have an opportunity to pull it out so I can follow you.
I have it myself too, so I have it.
Thank you. Continue.
That back line, that's the 20 feet, obviously it being a nonconforming lot and it's small there. It shows that that setback line goes to the foundation pretty much of the existing house. But if you look towards the right side where you actually have the existing porch, you actually had a set of stairs that comes down that is encroaching already into that setback. And in a conversation I had with the building inspector, he basically stated that those steps already are not code compliant due to the rise on each step being over nine inches. So he said automatically at this point, he's going to make us tear those steps down even if we didn't do anything and rebuild the steps, adding an additional stair, which then puts that last step about four foot six or four foot eight already past the foundation of the existing house now. So, what the owner's trying to do is create an extension of four feet to create a mudroom and a farmer's porch. So I really think the biggest question is the steps coming now off of the farmer's porch are going to extend past where the current steps are. So, that to me is probably the bigger portion of it, but if for some reason the board had an issue with even those stairs encroaching into the front yard and that setback, there was another option that I spoke with the building inspector about on site a couple of days ago. So, and that I can show you, but I figured I'll let the board talk about it and we can see where it goes.
All right. As you well know, we have certain statutory criteria that we must find in order to grant a variance. So obviously if these gentlemen have any questions that they want to address concerning that, you're here to answer them. Mr. Shula?
No, I agree though that the existing setback is not 20.9, it's whatever the, I don't have a scale on this, so it's probably less than 20 feet because of the existing stairs right now outside the setback line too. And, you know, I think considering the size of the addition and I don't think it's, you know, unfortunately in Dartmouth, if the stairs are attached to the building, the setbacks goes to the stairs, you know, so not to the foundation, you know.
Some jurisdictions don't.
Yeah, some towns and cities, if it's a fire escape or, you know, they go to the foundation, but.
I know in the past, I know in New Bedford, I don't know if they've changed their bylaw, but New Bedford wouldn't count stairs.
Mm-hmm.
It would have been nice if we had had that measurement on this plan because then it would have been less relieved, it could have been an argument that is less-
Agreed, agreed, agreed. I don't know if this helps at all, but I had also submitted to the online portal the owners that are right around the house that are abutting, they actually signed a petition too that were in favor of this. I don't know if that's relevant or-
That's good, yeah.
All right. So, we've got a variance request and to whom it may concern, we the property owners at 37 Stone are requesting a four bump out, all right? Reason for the request and neighbor approval. So we've got a labor approval from a Lorraine Stewart, but I don't have an address here. I've got something from a Teresa Lamar. Okay, I know Ms. Lamar. We've got a Ned Stewart and we've got a Michael, can't make out that, a Deborah Kelly. But I have no addresses, really have no addresses to establish where these people are in relation to the property. So, I'll just hold off on it. Obviously, they're not in opposition. Oh. I don't know if I want to enter it to the record, okay? Unless these gentlemen want to enter it, let me pass it over to them for them to look at it.
I'm just looking to see if they're-
Oh, I see, on the abudders list. Okay, so is there a Lorraine Stewart there?
Yes.
All right, so they're an abutter with notice. Is there a Teresa Lamar?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a Ned Stewart?
No.
Michael, looks like key.
Ned is, yes.
Yeah, there's a Michael. There's a Ned Stewart, okay, yes. So it's a husband and wife, same property. And there's a Michael Kelly, I believe he's a physician.
I don't have-
And Deborah Kelly.
No.
They live up that way. All right, I'll pass it along to these gentlemen. If you feel that we should have a motion, enter it and file it. I'll do so, but I don't see the need. Well, given that now we've been able to, at least some of them corroborate that they are actual abutters because they were, there were abutters that received notice.
Okay, I think it could go into the record.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the letter from abutters indicating that they have no objection to the granting of this variance. There are one, two, three, four, five abutters on two different pages.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's now part of the file, sir. All right. Any other, any questions, Attorney Human of the petitioner?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Well, I find this to be pretty straightforward, either we're, either we're in support or we're not, but obviously we need to hear from abutters and if there's anyone else in the audience. Doctor, any questions?
No, attorney.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Doesn't appear to be anyone. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? So I can report to the viewers at home that there's no one in the audience that would want to speak, was raised a hand, indicating they want to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition. So, I'm-
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question.
Sure, absolutely.
You mentioned it to you, we mentioned, you mentioned this earlier. Do we count the stairs?
We do, we do count the stairs.
That's why his-
Oh, okay.
Michael, he's outside too.
Oh.
So he's already in the-
Well, I'll keep these, I'll just keep these.
Already here.
Right.
He's at 18 feet, more or less probably right now.
What are you doing? You gave me two of these.
Can I have those, gentlemen?
Oh, I didn't know what.
Hang on, let me paperclip it.
You're gonna get one.
Oh.
Don't worry. That's yours. The other one's another one, I gotta get the other one back. Thank you. I see, I see what was going on. Okay, thank you. All right, guys, so I just put together some proposed findings and some rationale that I'm open to any type of comments that would make this a little stronger or better, just let me know. So, the subject property is located at 37 Stoneledge Road and is known on the town of Dartmouth assesses map as plat 123 lot 243. The property has been owned by David and Elizabeth Dunabedian since August 2013. The property is located in a general residence zoning district wherein any dwelling must be 20 feet from a street line. The subject property is a preexisting nonconforming lot measuring only 5,000 square feet in size. The petitioner slash owner seek to construct a four-foot bump out addition on the front of the dwelling for a covered porch and mudroom, reducing the existing front setback from 20.9 to 14.9 feet.
Mr. Chair, do you want to add that there's already nonconforming or, you know, I mean, the stairs is-
That's true, I guess I could, well, since it's been brought to our attention, there currently exists, the subject property is preexisting nonconforming lot measuring 5,000 and-
Including, or including the front stairs that extend into the setback line or something.
And there are front stairs-
That extend past the setback line or something.
Encroach, how about encroach?
On the front setback line.
Encroach upon the front setback line. Fair enough. The petitioner owner seek to construct a four-foot bump out addition, I already read that one. The petitioner seeks relief from Article 375-10.4D 1A.
14, it says 14.9, I think, is it?
Yeah, so I said, I said 20.9 to 14.9.
Well, 20, 20 feet, nine inches, I'm just being, 29 inches, what is it, 20.9?
29 inches.
So it should be 20.9 feet.
20.9 feet, okay.
And 14.9 feet, right?
Yeah. That's my secretary's doing. All right, 20.9 to 14.9 feet. The petitioner seek relief from Article 375-10.4D 1A development struck, development standards wherein a dwelling must be 20 feet from the street line. All right, now the rationale, gentlemen. There are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure or land is located. Our rationale is the subject parcel is a preexisting nonconforming lot with a nonconforming structure. Many of the lots in the general neighborhood are nonconforming. The placement of the existing dwelling in relation to perimeter lot lines limits further expansion. Two, a literal enforcement of provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. The addition of the covered porch and mudroom will improve the usefulness of the property and its compliance with current zoning, current building code. The widening of the porch will allow for safe ingress and egress from the dwelling. Three, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. Granting the variance will only promote safe use of the property and the proposed construction improvement to the dwelling will not pose a detriment to the public good. And four, variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The proposed construction and the character of the improvements are in keeping with pleasing aesthetics and will not derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. And gentlemen, with the usual conditions that we always have imposed on variances. I'm open to any interpretation or to any suggestions as to what we could do to make it a better decision. I thought you were raising your hand.
I think this is good. You said, I mean, the placement of the existing structure does not allow expansion other than the front, so.
These are always very limiting in our ability to be creative, but we have to make it, we have to find as close to the statutory requirements as we possibly can.
I agree.
Mr. Human?
I have nothing to add.
So, Doctor? I'll entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing on case ZAV 25-2.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, so what's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve petition ZAV 25-2 with the findings and conditions as stated.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good luck.
Yes, good luck. All right, moving on to the second and last hearing of tonight's meeting. It's variance case ZAV 25-3. The petitioner is John Romanelli. The owner of the property is Joseph Machado. The subject property is located at 26 Onyx Drive, also known as MAP 135 lot 57. It's located within the single residence aid district and it was legally advertised on April 3 and April 10 of this year.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abudders list.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The petitioner is seeking a variance proposing to build an 18-foot by 36-foot detached garage with living space above with four-foot setback from property line. House was built in 1975, therefore requires a 10-foot side and rear setback, seeking relief on the Article 375-7.4D 4AB exemptions from setback requirements. So, let's see what we got here. We have a letter from the building commissioner, was addressed to Mr. John Romanelli, and it says, "I've reviewed," it's dated March 24 of 2025, "I reviewed your application and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to noncompliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant proposing to build a new 18-foot by 36-foot detached garage with living space above with four-foot setback from side property line. House was built in 1975 and therefore requires 10-foot side and rear setbacks. A variance is required to reduce side yard setback from 10 feet to four feet." And they're seeking relief on the 375-7.4D 4 exemptions from setback requirements. And basically what it says, "Buildings or structures may be placed a minimum of 10 feet from all perimeter lot lines or 30 feet from a street line if the lot upon which the structure or structures to be located was in existence prior to October 26, 1993." And I believe it's been verified that this property was in existence prior to October 26, 1993. So, moving on to other comments, we have the board of health, which has just verified for us that it is town water and town sewer that serves this property. We do have a long comment from the conservation commission, which I'm going to read into the record. It's dated March 31, 2025, and it's at 11:56 AM. On March 13, 2025, "During my review of DL 25-3, I commented there is a wooded area at the southwest corner of the property and that straddles adjacent parcels without doing a ground assessment of the situation to assess actual ground conditions. The conservation staff cannot indicate that there are no wetland issues. From the latest GIS aerial photograph, which is in 2023, this wooded area could be a pocket of wetland largely supported by large drainage conditions," excuse me, "largely supported by aerial drainage conditions. Would recommend that the applicant conduct a wetland A1 assessment through the conservation office. Nothing regarding conservation has changed according to my records, therefore I cannot complete this sign-off. Be advised, Mark J. Garrett." And I guess this was on April 8, 2025 at 2:19. As of today, nothing regarding my previous comments have changed, so I guess he did a further review. And we also have comments from the DPW, which is typical for compliance with public works construction specifications and the standardized details, which I'm not going to read into the record.
There's also something about ADU.
Well, there is on this one. All right, so the submitted site plan does not show proposed utility connections to the ADU. Prior to sewer and water connection, a plan shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works showing proposed utility connections to the ADU. The submitted site plan does not show compliance with the stormwater management bylaw or stormwater management regulation. So obviously, these are things that they're going to have to have complied with prior to.
Right.
So, it's our usual standard requirements of conditions from other town boards. I believe that's all we have for comments. So, at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner's representative, Mr. John Romanelli. If you could kindly state your name and address and state your client's case.
Good evening, my name is John Romanelli of Zenith Land Surveyors at 1162 Rockdale Ave in the city of New Bedford, here representing Joseph Machado to my right, the property owner at 26 Onyx Drive in Dartmouth. What Joe is looking to do is to propose a garage with living space above for his mother-in-law. His father-in-law recently passed away and they want to have her close to home. We will be seeking a variance of six feet because the proposed garage slash addition living space will be four feet off the lot line. It's supposed to be a 10-foot requirement, so we're looking for six feet of relief. I did want to point out, we did put the calculations on this plan for the lot coverage and because where the proposed addition garage is, is actually paved all the way back to the, basically to the fence line at Joe's rear house line. So if you look at the proposed versus the existing conditions, there's a very minimal increase on lot coverage. It goes from proposed 38%, existence at 37%. So there's only a 1% increase in lot coverage because we're going to be removing the paved surface where this proposed addition slash garage is going to be constructed. The comments from Mr. Garrett from Conservation Commission, I just, I'm assuming it's this, like he said, the southwest corner. We are 129.4 feet away from the rear property line, so if it is in that area, I agree with him, we'll have to fill out the A1 form and take care of that to make sure that we're not within 100 feet with any construction purposes. I've asked Mr. Machado if, if any of his neighbors here are opposed to what he's looking to do. I know the gentleman here to, I guess that would be to the west, is a good neighbor of Joe's and didn't have a problem with it. I don't know if there's anybody else here in the audience that is going to speak in favor or opposed to it, but I did want to point out that the lot coverage calculation's a, it's a very minimal impact to a lot that's only 20,263 square feet in a zone where these lots now would have to be 40,000 square feet, so.
And you're still, you're still under the allowed amount of 50%?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
You're not in the aquifer?
No, we're not.
We'd be most concerned if you were in the aquifer. All right. Attorney Human, any questions of the petitioner?
The plan is, has nothing to do with short-term rental, correct?
Correct.
It's for his mother-in-law.
Correct.
Okay.
But Attorney Human, you do understand that that's not something that's going to be policed by us or anything else?
No, but I would want it in the conditions.
Yeah.
If it were, or maybe it should be in the conditions anyway.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure whether or not we can do that or anything.
No, no, making reference that they must comply with all the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, right, for short-term rental, you know? Because there are taxes and there are all those other things associated with it.
Well, that's something I'm concerned about.
I'm not saying we're not, we're going to stop short-term rental.
No.
I'm just saying that our decision probably should say something about if it's going to be short-term rental, they must comply with all the laws in the Commonwealth that require, that, you know, apply to short-term rental.
We can do that if you like. Is there anything else?
No.
All right.
Just a question for Mr. Romanelli. So you met with the building inspector, I assume, right, before or during?
We didn't have a sit-down, but we did have a phone conversation about it, yes.
I'm just getting confused, kind of to the DPW comments with the ADU. I mean, I know that recently was an ADU law that was passed by the governor and, so this is not a, he didn't consider this as an ADU unit or?
He did not.
Okay.
I would think he would have had to.
I would think so too.
Because he didn't say anything about bringing water out. He didn't say anything about having, you know, the-
Well, you don't have to bring a separate water to it, to the ADU. You can, it's going to probably attach to the home itself, right?
But under the old bylaw, we would have to approve such a thing like that.
Under a special permit, yes.
Yeah.
It would, but-
But he didn't mention that at all in his decision, that's why I'm saying-
I know, I was, it's been, it's thrown me off a little bit, but when you do the calculation, if you look, I guess if the second floor is for living space-
Less than 900.
It's 648, it's under 700.
Right.
So, under the old bylaw, I mean, it's not-
Under the existing bylaw for an ADU, it's 800.
Well, it's 900, the state.
The state is, but I'm saying ours was 800 in the time.
I think the state supersedes ours.
I agree.
Right, so that's why I'm not sure what is disconsidered, because if it wasn't an ADU-
Is that an accessory structure with plumbing that we're, because normally we, right?
Normally we would say you can't-
You can't do it.
You can't do it.
Right, but the ADU changed all that, I think, but if you-
Are we concerned with the fact that he hasn't designated this as an ADU?
I'm not concerned at all about it. I mean, he, the plan specifically says-
New, new ADU apartment, oh, okay. Yeah, I just saw that. And the DPW-
Would have seen it too.
I'm surprised he didn't raise it in his letter.
Because in the ADU, you need to get a separate address, I believe, for the structure, right?
I'm honestly not that familiar with the new bylaw.
Yeah, I think, and separate utilities, but I'm not sure, I mean, right now, we're in between, I guess that's what, that was my question, if you had a chance to talk to the building inspector before, you know, so.
No, and I think actually my conversation was probably in early February, late January, so it was probably right, I know the bylaw got passed February 3rd or something like that, yeah.
February is what changed.
Yeah.
Well, I want everyone to feel comfortable, whatever we do here, but we're still, we just, we just want to explore it, right? We still got people in the audience that we have to-
Right, and we might have other-
We all understand where we're at and what's actually being requested here. Are we all comfortable in designating this as an ADU?
The plans say so.
But just because you label it as such doesn't mean it is such. Certainly seems to me that that was the intent in his letter, he's saying it's going to have living space above, from the, from the building inspector. Excuse me?
Because otherwise it would have to be attached, you know, when ours bylaws would have to be-
We're beyond that.
I know, so.
All right, Doctor?
Yes, didn't we have something about the in-laws that was automatic and by right?
That's in single residence B or single residence, I think, single residence A and single residence B. This is a, this is a general residence district, we don't have that bylaw, do we? In general residence? I think it's in single residence A and B, we had that. But now, a lot of that's up, a lot of that's really not as applicable anymore with ADUs. All righty, so, this is a public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? There not being anyone? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Got a gentleman here that would like to come forward. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm John George. I live right in, straight in back of 26 Onyx. I, I was under impression that this was an ADU. Now, more so my, I'm not here, I know the Machados, a good neighbor, I'm not here to make enemies or anything like that, but now there's not an ADU, it automatically has to be attached. Right or wrong?
If it's not an ADU, but the thing is, is it's labeled as such, it falls within the requirements of an ADU.
How does it fall in the requirements?
Because the living space is under a certain amount of square footage.
How about the setbacks?
The setbacks do not.
Okay.
So that's why they're here requesting- So that's why they're here requesting to, to construct an ADU within four, within four feet of a property line.
Now, when it's four feet, right now it's ten, like my house is ten.
Yep.
So technically, it's twenty feet from house to house, or more.
Potentially.
Now, it's going to be four feet. Now, the next, alongside of it, it becomes sixteen feet.
Assuming, assume they're at ten, assuming they're at ten.
Yeah, so later on, if they want to do something, they have to fight to get that ten feet back. Right or wrong?
I don't know about fighting, a fight to get ten feet back. If they want relief, they can ask for relief.
It's ten feet, but there's also twenty feet property to property.
Potentially, yes, I don't know, the other house is not plotted on this plane, I don't know where the other house is.
It's way, I checked the area.
It's way, it's way, it's not close by.
Okay.
It's twenty-two Onyx. I, I just, I just have no problem, I wouldn't be here if I, if, if it was going to be attached. Now, he's saying it's for his mother, attached is even better, I mean, it's not an outsider, you know what I mean? And you'll have your ten feet left alone on the side. Seems like I'm only one, I mean, I'm not, it is what it is.
No, listen, it's something we're, I'm struggling with because it's what, it's what precedent we set moving forward, where if we grant an ADU that's within a certain number of feet of a property line, then there will be other people that may potentially want to do the same thing.
Yes.
And basically, a lot of it has to do with is the immediate abutters to the property, if they have concerns, then we try to address those concerns. We have a public meeting for a reason, so that people can voice their opinion and their concerns.
Yeah.
The person that I think that would have the greatest concern is the person that's immediately to the west of this property, and at this point, I don't see them here. I understand that obviously you have a right to be here, and you're behind them.
Well, I got, I got a letter in the mail.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, and even if you didn't have a letter in the mail, anybody from town who has a concern has a right to be, to voice their concern.
Yep. Again, again, I guess I wouldn't be here if this was going to be attached.
I get that.
I got, and listen, I got friends of mine in the neighborhood, beautiful jobs they did. They even went up high, top in-law apartment, okay? Looks beautiful. The house becomes bigger, you know what I mean, so that's, that's, other than that, I don't, I don't have a problem with anything. It's, why, why go through the, why go through the messing with the setbacks when you can very easily attach it to the house? I take the sewer and the utility is going to be from there, it's not going to be from the street.
I got to go back and read the, the ADU bylaw, but that's really something you're going to have to deal with the building inspector on. If he can pull it off the existing house, that's fine. If you have to bring separate utilities, that's what he's going to have to do.
I believe this has to come from the front lawn, or if it's got a basement, from, I believe it's got to be from that building.
I think he might be right about that as well, I'm just, for the moment right now, I don't, I don't specifically remember. Maybe Mr. Romanelli knows, but he could, he could let us know, but what's your understanding of that?
I don't know where the utilities will be coming from on an ADU.
Mr. Romanelli, do you know for certain?
I don't know for certain, but I am, I would say sixty percent sure they do have to come within, from the existing structure.
Existing structure.
I think I...
So that brings us to the interesting question, why isn't it attached?
Excuse me?
Why isn't, why didn't you design it so it would attach to your, the house?
Just for the visual and...
Pick it come up, just so you can come up. Please identify yourself, name and address.
Machado, twenty-six Onyx Drive. We didn't attach it because I think visually, it's, it would look weird, so we wanted to keep it as a separate unit. I think it looks...
So you think aesthetically it wouldn't look...
Aesthetically, it looks better. And then also, on that corner where the only spot it could attach, we have a gas fireplace with a stone wall, which we would have to eliminate because now we wouldn't be able to vent anything.
And that's in the back?
It's in the front, right, so if you're facing the house, the right side, front corner.
To the, to the right side?
Yeah, it would be right here.
Twenty-six Onyx.
Can you show me?
Right here.
Okay. So by attaching the, the proposed structure to the house, that would be eliminated in essence?
Correct.
Okay.
Which we spent a fortune on building the inside of the fireplace wall.
Did you have any conversations with your neighbor to the, to the west of you about what you were doing here?
Yes, he said, "Do whatever you want," he's in favor of it. He also said if there was a letter that was needed, but I didn't think there was a letter needed, so...
And what is the name of that neighbor?
Stan Levine.
Who?
Stanley Levine.
Stanley Levine, okay. Was he in a butter that was notified? If you could just check the list, please.
He's probably about a hundred and fifty away from the property line.
Yeah, I did check that earlier, just...
So he's a ways.
Yeah.
But...
If we do anything, we probably ought to note that he said Stanley Levine.
Originally, I spoke with him about buying property, but I guess because they're both non-conforming lots, I couldn't buy a lot to build on it.
He was notified? All right, gentlemen, Stanley Levine is on the abutters list and he was notified.
Right. I, I don't see the, I don't see the, the fireplace unless I'm looking at an older, was that like something new that you put in, on the house?
That was, so it's not a stone, it's just a stainless steel pipe that comes out. It's not a full chimney.
Okay, so it's, it's like a gas, is it a gas?
A direct vent gas.
Oh, direct, yeah, I see it here, okay, all right, I thought it was a stone, okay.
No, on the inside, it's stone.
On that piece there.
Yeah, I mean, that's easily, that you can type it out, it's not, um, yeah, I, I mean, I personally was struggling with, with the ADU because now this is a new law that came out and starting, you know, we start with the first case that we...
This is probably the first one, is this the first one or the second one?
I think would be the first one, that, with the variance.
Yes, with the variance for the designation of ADU.
Because if they, if it's not a variance, they can go to the building department, they don't need to be here, you know, if they meet all the requirements and setbacks.
They can build a detached, they can build a detached structure just like this, as of right. The only reason you're here is because it's not ten feet away.
Because of the setback, yeah. And four, I mean, four, that's pretty close, but...
Which it still wouldn't be ten feet away, even if it was attached.
Uh, you'll be very close, I think you would be. If you, yeah, unfortunately, you might have to change the, if you make it sixteen by twenty, by forty might work, you know, the addition.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen for a garage is, is okay, you know, if, you can go deeper, a little bit deeper, and I looked at the second floor, it's open space, so I think it could work. And again, remember, you're here for a variance, so a variance, you need to exhaust all your options before you ask for a variance, so just, I'm not, because of the ADU and, you know, starting with the first case, you know, setting a precedent because otherwise, you know, I, we assume that this is going to be like a pretty common thing coming in Dartmouth, you know, which, which is...
It's common.
You know, um, I, I'm not sure at this time, I think, Mr. Chair, I might suggest if we can continue so we can have a chance to talk to the building commissioner, just to get his opinion on this, what do you think?
That's fine.
I mean, I'm not ready to...
I have no problem with that. No, and, and I guess I, I have concerns about what the exact definitions are involving ADUs. I know that the town, through the planning board, has put together a proposed amendment to the zoning...
With regard to ADUs?
With regard to ADUs? You didn't read that, did you?
It's going to go to town meeting, right?
And it's already gone to the Attorney General's office, and they've made a bunch of changes on it.
They have.
And it's come back, so I'm not sure where it is right now. That was their March meeting, I happened to, I was looking at ADUs and it popped up on the screen. So, I mean, I don't, I just have a problem with the whole concept, but that's...
And I have a question on the floor layout. I noticed on the garage, there's two doors, so technically, there's a door that can go up on the second floor, and the second floor, you have the deck coming down, that's your second means of egress, I assume, right? And so you don't have access, it's like the person who's using the garage doesn't have access to the second floor, right? Or the person who is using the second floor doesn't have access to the garage, is that the intention?
Yes.
Okay, this is my question.
So my house doesn't have a basement, so that's storage, it's going to be used for storage.
Okay. Part of the garage, you mean?
The garage.
Oh, the whole garage?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right, so when's our next date? Nothing on the twenty-first?
You just announced it's the twenty-first.
Oh, I did, yeah, yeah, but what did you tell, yeah, well, I read it into the record that, because it was on the agenda as the twenty-first.
Okay.
What do we have on for the twenty-first?
Twenty-first is the wrong date, first of all. We do have the eleventh, but we didn't have any cases, that's probably why I should have put the twenty-fifth.
No, we're saying the twenty-first of May, is there anything else in May?
I'm, I'm still in June. I'm in June.
We do have the twenty-first.
We do have the twenty-first.
Oh, we do have the twenty-first.
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, so you're...
I have my sound in June.
Okay.
So what's, what do we have on for the twenty-first?
We only have one case.
Oh, yeah, you can add this, it's easy.
Yeah, so you'd like to speak to the building inspector?
Yeah, do you?
No, no, that's, no, listen, I just want some clarification, I'd like to know, one, if there's going to be, if there's going to be separate hookups. I think that's a great idea to sit down with the building inspector.
I think so.
Especially where this is the first one. What is, what is his interpretation as to what this is? Because obviously, he's not using the lower level for the calculation of an ADU, he's only using the living space as a calculation. If that's what he's going to do, if that's what he's going to use going forward, at least we know what it is. And then we just got to, then we just have to deal with the challenge of whether or not we want to, you know, entertain a situation in which we're going to grant this type of relief. The only good thing here, in my opinion, is there's not an immediate structure to the west of this, where they're going to be impacted at this point in time. I understand Mr., I believe it was Mr. George's concerns, of what he said, that they could just attach it, but I'm a, I'm a, I'm a big guy on aesthetics, things have to look a certain way. Maybe he's the kind of guy who likes things out of symmetrical, I don't know, but it won't be symmetrical if you attach it, definitely won't. And I don't, you know, and I think they sort of went out of their way, if you look at this thing, I think it's fairly pleasing, you look at it, it's on a, it's attached to a pretty nice-looking structure.
Oh, no, I agree.
Well, let's get some clarification directions from the...
Sure. All right, gentlemen, so at this point in time, we're not going to close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to continue it.
I make a motion that we continue variance case ZAV twenty-five dash three to May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. We'll see it in a couple of weeks.
Very good.
And hopefully, we'll be a little more knowledgeable then.
Yeah, there, there are more coming, so...
All right, yeah, I'm sure.
Michelle? Seems like you have some, obviously.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right, so you took that away from me, but you got it, for next week, you'll, you'll get it to me for next week? That's fine. Uh, yeah, I'll take it. All right, so you took my, I gotta, see, I need this so I can read on. All right, so moving, moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting.
That was May twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-one. Thank you.
Where am I?
Moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting, the first matter we have is review and approval of administrative minutes of March fifth, twenty-twenty-five. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have no comments.
I have no comments.
Doctor?
I'm standing.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of March fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to review and approval of special permit, ZSP twenty-four dash twenty-two for two sixty-three Elm Street, Unit two sixty-one Elm Street.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to review and approval of special permit, ZSP twenty-five dash one for two sixty-three Elm Street, Unit two sixty-one Elm Street.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to review and approval of special permit, ZSP twenty-five dash one for nine Autumn Court.
So it's review and approval of minutes of, right, so we, we already approved the special permits, minutes.
Well, special permit minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, this is for the different, this is the same property but a different case number.
Oh, yeah, uh...
No, it's not the same property, this is a different property, this is Autumn Court, nine Autumn Court.
Oh, all right, you're right, right, right.
There was actually two hearings, there'll be another one as well later on in the list. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have no comments.
I have no comment.
Doctor?
I'm standing.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of special permit, ZSP twenty-five dash one for nine Autumn Court.
All in favor?
Aye.